Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. First thing we're going to do is, is there anybody here to speak for the open public letter? Two minutes, if not, then forward. Okay, I'll, approval of the agenda. Lyle, is there anything you have to add?
No.
Pete?
No.
Julie?
No.
Dale?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Jenny?
I have a few things to add. I would like to add under new business, letter H, a letter of support for Heartland Corn Products that they asked us to write on their behalf. You should have a copy of it at your spot. Under the consent agenda, I would like to add Barb Albrex resignation letter. And under new business, I, I would like to ask for permission to post the city clerk position in house.
What? Okay, I'll make a motion to include the agenda or to accept the agenda.
Second.
Motion made, is there a second?
Yep.
Pete, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carries. The consent agenda, has everyone had time to take a look at everything? Is there any questions? Everybody get a chance to take a look at the bills?
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
Is a motion made to accept the consent agenda, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by Lyle, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion, if not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side, motion carries. Public hearing, non-new business construction project, Brian?
What?
Half a million difference.
Good evening. So the reason I'm here tonight is hopefully to try to be more brief than the last time, but basically just to discuss this letter that I had sent out. I'm not sure if you've all had a chance maybe to look through it or read it, but basically it kind of covers a few different things. And the first part was when we had met with the county about the project, they had asked that we add Main Street from First Street to the railroad tracks as part of this project, kind of for two reasons. One is because they'd like to remove those existing spur line tracks, not the main line tracks, from Main Street. And then also because they thought, and maybe this kind of came up about through our discussion with the county, it might work out better for them for when they want to reconstruct from First Street to Highway 19, then they could use the county road as a detour. So if we could include at least that intersection and that stretch, then they wouldn't have to maybe have as many headaches when they decide to do the rest of, the rest of Main Street. So that's basically the first set of updated cost estimate, cost estimates and plans are for the addition of that stretch of Main Street. And then also the council requested that we look at doing an alternate route down by the DFA silos, so that's what the second plans are about. And as I mentioned in here, I estimated basically the easement costs at $30,000. You know, I don't know if that's in the ballpark or not. That's kind of just based on what the county has for property values down there. So you can kind of see in that second set of maps where that realignment would take the utilities. It wouldn't have to get too far into that, that Lawrence and Beverly Route lot, but by the time you excavate, it would be a fairly decent, you know, easement that you'd probably need in there. So I guess assuming that, you know, that reroute would take place, the city would save approximately $471,000 in utility costs, you know, keeping in mind that that might change, you know, depending on how much that assessment would cost, or if the city would have to purchase those properties outright, or how that would work. But then, then I also wanted to note that, as I mentioned before, you know, depending on how the survey would come in, it might not be necessary to, you know, do any type of trench stabilization or pipe jacking for the sanitary. So if that turned out to be the case, you'd still need to do that for the storm sewer, so then your savings would end up being closer to, you know, $320,000 to $319,000 if, you know, if you're just seeing those savings on the storm sewer side, basically. So I'm not sure if there's any questions on, on that at all, that portion?
You're taking it back onto First Street instead of just straight across that root lot and across Pleasant Avenue?
Instead of just continuing straight. Yep, and I think while the storm sewer, oops, I'm on the wrong sheets here. I mean, I guess the, you were thinking maybe just continuing straight with the storm sewer and the sanitary and everything both. I think what we are trying to do here with the sanitary is connect to that existing manhole and not have to create, you know, dig out, that, that manhole is very, very deep there, actually.
My question is the cost of 60, well, 80 feet of street as opposed to a manhole?
I'm talking about on the east end and the connection of the existing. I guess I'm not, I don't know if there'd be, you'd still have to tear up the street, I guess.
Yeah, but you need to tear up the first street, continue to cross and just take it across Pleasant, because the problem you run into is that's their loading area.
Yep.
Which means we've got to do overnight work and that adds a lot to the cost.
Right, so then, yeah, I mean, I guess...
That's why I was asking to take it straight across the root lot and across the gravel parking lot at Bartles. I realize we'll have to put a different, another manhole cover in, but cost wise, it's going to be cheaper to put a second manhole cover in or do a 45 down the hill than it is to do overnight work and tear 80 feet of street. That was what I was saying.
Okay, I thought you were talking more about the DFA silos. Yep, yep, and there, yeah, there'd be maybe from a constructibility standpoint, it might be easier if you were to just go straight east, but you still would have to come down that, that stretch for the water main. But I mean, obviously that would be not as deep, so...
That, that's what I was talking, so...
Yep, 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 and that would, yeah, it probably would help all constructibility wise. You know, you'd keep out of that First Street and Pleasant Avenue intersection a little bit more. Yep, yep.
It's not cheap.
You know, there again, the storm sewer, I don't think it would be an issue to discharge it upstream of that crossing, considering that, the culvert crossing for the county, for the county ditch and at the railroad crossing, they're both the same size pipe, I believe. So I don't think from a pipe capacity standpoint that it really affect anything to discharge, I guess, on the north side of that, that culvert crossing there.
Brian, would that pipe be 42 inch yet?
We've got 60 inch, yep.
Or 60, but stay the same then?
Yep, yep, yep. I took a look at the drainage clogs for, the county had asked us to do that too, for that railroad, the capacity of that railroad, railroad culvert. And it doesn't look like adding that additional drainage area would really have any significant impact on, on that culvert at the railroad crossing, so... So it looks like we should be able to add that additional area without any concerns. It really adds, I think, less than for that, that culvert that crosses the railroad tracks, I think it's like a half a percent of the existing drainage area would be added to it, so it's, it's very minimal adding that additional area to the city. Yeah, that's, I mean, that's something that could, you know, be looked at, sure.
We're working in dirt as opposed to working in tar. It's, you know...
Yep, but, yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, but you'd still, as far as the water main goes, you'd still be tearing up the street.
Right.
Yep. So I mean, I don't know, from, from a street construction cost standpoint, there might not be a whole lot of savings there. It'd just be a, I think, a constructibility. I agree with you there, yep. Yep.
I forgot the water.
Then, then I guess kind of the final, maybe not the final, but one of the final parts of this letter. You know, after the discussion with, with Shannon here at the previous council meeting, I, I put together what the assessments would be, as I mentioned at that meeting, and I think at the, the meeting before that, when I presented the feasibility study. In calculating the assessments, I had taken out the county participation cost of the assessable portion of the project, but the city policy does allow for that to be taken out of the city portion of the project and not the assessable portion. So just for something, kind of some food for thought, I did also put together assessments, assuming that that wasn't taken out of the assessable cost and it would be taken out of the city cost, basically, so... So for both the alternate route and the, the original route, you can see that it basically, let's see, for the original route, it would, you know, essentially double it, and I believe it's the same for the, just something, just something for, for the council to keep in mind, because I think Shannon had said something along the lines of, you know, he thought the assessments maybe were a little bit lower than what he would, he would expect to see them, I guess, but... And then finally, I guess, the letter just included our revised schedule. After meeting with, with Don and Jenny, we had talked about probably holding, trying to hold the assessment hearings, I guess, before the project was awarded. So after bids came in, before the project was awarded, hold the assessment hearing at that time. Versus how we've done in the past, is we've held it, we've held the assessment hearing after the project is substantially complete in the fall, because then we have a very good idea of what the final cost will be. But this was just, this is another way that it can be done.
And it doesn't matter if we decide to wait on this project?
Nope, I mean, the, you know, some of the construction costs might need to be updated and things like that. I'd asked Jenny, I know she had mentioned something that the council might be considering that. I'm not sure if you've discussed with, with Tim or anybody at the county how that might affect...
I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it.
Yep, their, their county participation, because we've been, you know, I think they've kind of been expecting the cost, so I'm not sure if that money, if it, if it's not spent, if it gets delegated somewhere else, and then will it be available in a year or two? I don't, I'm not sure, so that may be something to try to figure out the county, too.
On my list.
But, but otherwise, I don't, you know, it's really up to the council when they want to do it.
You said something too about if you wanted to be put on that.
Yeah, so we did...
Five-year thing, we would need a hearing anyway?
Yes, you'd need a, well, you'd need a hearing, yes, for the, for the Clean Water Evolving Fund, yep, yep. So we did submit the application for that, but that does require in order to get on the list, a public hearing, so...
Because they've got to rebalance to rebrand.
Yep. So you could ultimately hold a public hearing and then decide at that time not to move forward if that's kind of what the feelings are, but then you'd still be able to get on that, that project priority list, yep. And then I would still move forward with moving, with, with applying for the PPL for the drinking water fund as well, because like I say, you're still on that five-year list, and then at least you kind of have that first step kind of taken care of. So in early, it's just a matter of deciding when to move forward or when or if to move forward with it.
So we're going to have the assessment hearing next month?
Yep, I'll plan on still having it next month, I guess. I'll just plan on the assessments, doing it kind of as they're presented, the feasibility report, except updated unless the, you know, the council would like me to change it to the alternate route or to, you know, taking the, the county portion and putting it towards the city portion and not the, you know, not the, yeah, the assessment, so...
Whatever you wish. Any questions?
The Brown Street project, you had approached the railroad about running swale and taking the water out to that county ditch, and they were against that?
I had approached them about discharging directly into their right of way, and they did not seem to be in favor of that at all. So what, so what that portion, what that project included was running a swale basically parallel to theirs, almost.
Reason I ask is that they're going to be rebuilding that track this summer.
Oh, they are.
West from there, and I thought, hey, might be a...
But that track is past that.
They're starting out farther than that?
Yeah, that track is on the other side of the semi.
I just thought maybe it was another option, so...
But there is a lot of water that sits there in that, besides the tracks and over there behind Mrs.'s...
By, by Brown Street?
Yeah.
So I don't know if it...
Before you store your stuff, Gordon, it's always wet in there, isn't it?
Okay. So, yeah, maybe their right of way needs to be cleaned, I'm not sure what, why it doesn't drain well here, but... Yep, so I guess, I mean, I don't know if, as far as...
What you guys, which option do you want the assessments to go out as?
Can we have, do we have the options? Or which way, wait?
Well, we're having the assessment, we're having the assessment hearing next month, we need an option.
How would you like me to present the assessments, I guess? Would you like me to present them as they were in the, well, I would have to present them, I guess, as updated here for the addition of Main Street, but would you like me to, I can do it either that way or with the alternate route?
You can't do both. You can't, you can't say these are your two options?
I could, I could present on both.
Or is that a conflict?
I don't, I don't think it's necessarily a conflict. The, the trouble might be is if you're going to start, if I'm going to present four different kind of assessment roles for, I, I think the city should just kind of decide maybe whether or not they want to include the county portion to go towards, you know, the city cost or the assessable cost before the preliminary hearing, but, but ultimately, the, the preliminary hearing, you know, you're not setting the assessments, but, but if you're going to take them from, if you're going to double them, if the city decides later on they want to take the county participation and put it towards the city cost and not, you know, you know what I'm saying, then, then you're doubling the assessments essentially, so...
As far as the, the option of changing the route, would we be better off going with the assessment for the original design and if we wanted to change that design?
Lower it? I would think so, because then it would, it would lower your assessments.
Or higher.
It would lower the assessment.
Yep, and I guess, and it's, and I'm not sure how the negotiations for that would work with the property owners and things, so I mean, if it's how, how feasible it is, I'm not, I'm not sure. I guess there's probably have to be some discussions with the property owners.
I would just recommend, Gordon, if you're original...
Okay.
It's up to the council.
For the meeting.
I think so.
Okay.
You said it was something different.
Yep. Okay, otherwise...
Thanks, Brian.
Remind you to look for the water main next time.
Okay, recommendation from Street Committee concerning Brown Street and the water issues on 11th Street.
We meant to discuss Brown Street, and I think the consensus of the committee was that we would like to have a public hearing next month and invite the members of Brown Street to come, and I will send all, all the options to them and give them a chance to come and see what they want to do out there.
Leverage.
So that was it, and the water issues on 11th Street, that isn't an issue anymore, so...
Water issues on 11th Street.
That was...
Which tile? Ah, God, you've got to take care of it. It's no problem.
Okay, request chamber. You guys?
We stay here?
Is that where you're here, Deanne?
Yeah, yeah. Do you want us there or can we sit?
Wherever you, wherever you feel comfortable.
You don't bite.
Okay.
Deanne bite.
We'll just stand, because there's only one.
I've never been to one, this is kind of fun. Okay, well, do you want to speak? You're the president, I'm past. I'm a husband.
Well, as you know, Deanne is past president and board member, and I'm president of the chamber. And for a while, we have been speaking about doing a city cleanup, and we were able to get some estimates that Jenny and Melissa were kind enough to send to us. I don't know if she gave you guys copies of them.
Yep, they got it last month and this one.
So with going with Gaylord, we saw that it was a higher price, so we thought maybe we should go with the R, the Renville Sibley County, or Sibley?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. The reason we think we should go with this and would like the city to agree and work with us is we think the community, it would be a benefit to the community and to provide that kind of services, plus you see other towns doing it.
And we've had requests for people that are asking for that, to have a cleanup day. I'm not saying we have to do it twice a year or whatever, but as a chamber, I mean, we're for the businesses, but we're willing to put up half to help out, but we don't want, it's really not our place to put it up all, so...
What was that cost for Sibley-Renville?
$375.
$375, and so half would be $300.
Was it 3, yeah, $375?
$375.
Yeah, because wasn't, wasn't Gaylord sanitation, weren't they like, wasn't it $1,000 or something? It was a high, so...
$150 delivery fee and $75 a ton to dump.
Yeah, so...
Would they have someone get watching what's being put in?
I, I, do you know? No.
No.
So we'd have to get a list of what they can and cannot, and we'd probably find somebody to do that, whether it's, you know, the Lions or...
The chamber's willing to work with you guys and organize it.
We're just asking for not to have to...
Is it just up to one day?
Yes.
And we thought to do it around the same time as either the spring or the fall...
Garage sales.
Garage sales would be a good timing and stuff, and I know the spring is not going to happen this, this time.
No, but maybe fall.
But if we can, if we can get it worked out and do the fall, I just think it would be such a benefit to the community that we could offer something like that.
So...
Any suggestions?
So when the one dumpster is full, that's it?
No, it, it says, the RS1 says three 30-yard dumpsters, dumpsters, and he would charge us $325 for delivery, pickup and disposal.
Yeah, but when they're full, they're full, you know, and then we, it's only there, it would only be there for a few hours, you know, and then as soon as it's full, he'd be coming and taking them away, so they aren't going to sit there.
And we want to make sure that it's gone before evening.
Yeah.
And people are just dumping whatever in there, so...
How about people in the country, would they start bringing stuff in? Not city people, people in the townships?
You could, I mean, you can handle it any way you want. A lot of those, you know, like countywide pickup things or something, you have to provide proof that you live in the area, so, I mean, if we wanted to, we could say you have to have a city...
ID required, yeah.
Well, yeah, you could do town cleanup or something, so then it's, you know, town residents only, or, I mean, we could state that.
And there's no appliances, tires?
No, no mattresses, I mean, paint, I mean...
And again, we would, Jenny would help us get that list, too.
Yeah.
Of what we can and cannot accept.
We'd advertise that of what you can and cannot bring, so, you know, and then have somebody, a few people there, so...
I like the idea, because I think it just, it's, it's not costing the city very much, and it's just a way of saying, we want to encourage people to take some pride in the community and clean it up.
Yeah.
Exactly.
And they won't have to pay to have it, get a dumpster or any of that, we're, we're taking care of that, so...
Yeah.
They just got to get it there, so...
Try again, I know that we...
Like I said, I find it hard to make somebody else pay, pay to clean up somebody else's garbage. We have a nuisance ordinance, we have 24-hour, 7-day-a-week coverage for law enforcement and the ability to assess cleanup costs on somebody's property taxes. While I agree it's a great idea, we already have a resource for cleanup.
Well, and, and for me, you know, like, stuff that I want to get rid of, I mean, my house is, I mean, my property is not a nuisance, but what I do with it, I mean, yes, can I, I mean, it's just a, you know what I mean? So I understand where you're coming from.
I have sawzall in a garbage camp, I've been there.
Yeah, you know, but you're looking at some of the elderly people that can't do any of that, you know, this is a way of getting rid of some of their stuff and whatever, but, or whatever, so...
And you see other small towns offering this, and I think that's just, it would be nice for us to also offer it. And yes, I agree with you somewhat.
I know people that have all carbed through Mankato and put it in the Mankato system because their kid lives there.
Yeah, well, yeah, I have a dumpster, too, and people put stuff in it, too, and I'm dumping their garbage, but, you know, I mean...
You know, if it was something we did monthly and it was running expense and we saw a lot of abuse of it, then I think, you know, and I think your points are valid, but...
And I think the cleanup's valid, I get it, but I just, I have a hard time making somebody else pay to get rid of somebody else's garbage.
The thing, the thing is, you've got to try and see what the outcome is. If it's a good turnout and we don't see a lot of abuse, then let's do it again next year. But how do you know if you don't try it?
I think it's worth a try again, so let's try again. The city cover half the expense of the city cleanup day as presented.
And that is roughly $175? The motion is made, is there a second?
Second.
Lyle, I'll second the motion, is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? Now, proceed to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you, we'll get more details.
I mean, do you want us to sort of set up a potential plan and send it back to Jenny about date and get all the...
When we're going to do it all?
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies.
Okay, we have, fire department, question for us?
We had our township meeting...
A big one.
Last, last, was it two weeks ago, three weeks ago? A long time ago.
Three weeks ago tonight.
Three weeks ago, and you want to explain or you want me to?
Um, well, since you're on the roll, go ahead, bud.
The consensus at the, at the township meeting was to go with a four-year lease option, so that is what we are bringing to you tonight. Alsberg was not at the meeting, and I did talk to them, and they took it back to township board. They would like to pay theirs 100%, but Bismarck, Cornish and Transit were in favor of the four-year option, so now it's up to you guys to decide what you want to do.
It's a four-year lease to own on the truck, so...
We could pay ours, Paul?
What's the advantage, does pay and say half and keep in half of our reserve in reserve? Is there any advantage?
Interest on, is be paying, I understand, it's, it's pretty low, but...
Right, it is quite low.
So I was just asking, just because that's how I am, so...
We've got the money to pay a portion, I'm just asking, is it something we want to consider?
And that's...
And I'm okay either way, I'm just asking the question.
So from the, from the day the papers are signed, it's 395 days till delivery, so you have, yeah?
Fire's remorse for 15 months.
They do want, they do want some money down, but...
Like what?
F.
What was it? No, no, what was it, Jenny? It was...
F. Yeah? So, they wanted what, it was 10 or 15%?
I was thinking, I thought it was like 10, like you said.
It was 10 or 15, so...
And we covered that, so... And what I told Alsberg is, if you want to pay yours 100%, we'll just put that to buy down the lease.
Yeah, exactly. Everybody got a break on it.
And if we pay our half, then we, you know, whatever the balance is left, that interest, those payments would have to be made up by...
Mm-hmm.
Right.
We, we pay it and bill them, but yeah.
The interest would be calculated per what's left.
Yep.
Okay.
I make a motion, we go for it.
Motion made to go ahead and purchase the truck?
I'll second that.
There's a second, is there any further discussion?
Does it take DCAL batteries or pen lights? I mean, how big is the truck?
Any further discussion? Serious discussion.
I just want to see Lonnie lose it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion carries.
All right.
Kind you got to like pull it backwards and get it to go.
I got one question for you. Yes, the truck is mine, which truck?
The old one?
Yes, you can have the old truck.
Yes.
They're going to keep it for another pumper.
Like you need anything, you need to... We're going to put a side dump box on it for you, already.
I don't like to talk at council meetings anymore.
The deal? I don't know. What do you mean, you don't know?
The city owns the truck, the city has...
I talked to all of them. Whatever, just talk, it's cheap.
Well, that's, that's... Tell them it's coming out of his budget.
I think I have the old one back.
He could have the old one back.
We got to sell that at auction, you know, what was better sealed, yeah, it'll be fun.
All right.
You got a new truck, guys.
You will.
So I'll get ahold of them and figure out what we need to do.
All right.
I have the guy's contact information, so.
Sounds good.
I'll take it from here.
And, and the down payment?
Yeah.
That's something we would be paying at this point.
We're the fiscal agent, so any money the townships would provide would come, it would all go through us.
So basically, we're gonna pay the down payment and that's gonna be part of our portion of our half and then it's just.
That's fine.
Correct.
All right, very good, thank you guys.
Is it red or yellow? I never got that question answered.
Red.
That's good. All right, resolution adopting B and G policy.
It's a tariff.
Yes, the first page of.
It's a thirty, thirty-seven.
I read it, I'm goofing around.
Generation.
Yes. Pete can answer any questions.
Yes.
What's the rate, Pete?
The rate?
What's the tariff rate? Said he could answer any question.
No trick question.
Basically, all as it is, there's that if people put generation on their place, because our city has to pay for interconnections and everything, there is a tariff that they have to pay to sell their electricity.
So if they go solar or gas generator or wind?
Yep.
Gotcha.
They can, they can sell some of it back, but there's a cost to selling it back, is what you're saying?
That's correct.
Because we have to pay for the infrastructure, the meters, everything going back, so, yep.
I'll entertain a motion to accept this.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Dale, made by Pete, seconded by Dale to approve the resolution adopting the B and G policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion carries.
Yeah, for the co-generation and small power tariff.
Explain that a little bit, Pete.
You know, all as I know is that the federal government is putting a tariff on, on this and so we have to abide by the.
Federal government standards on their tariff, yep.
Yeah, that's all we're asking is to.
We're mirroring federal law.
All right, motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Dale.
Second.
Seconded by Pete. Is there any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
You know, I was gonna say, I, I know there's more solar going on, but I think that part of this is kind of slowing down the wind out in the farm, farm places where they find out that they just can't hook on.
For free, yeah.
For free, yeah.
Okay, next thing, approve job description and advertise for utility position.
The water and sewer committee met tonight and approved the job description that is in your packet and the, and the starting wage, the ad for the paper. Well, I guess, do you have any questions or?
Didn't see in there, does that cover? Now we'll talk about that another time.
It's gonna be a position that will be water, sewer and electric. The new hire will get trained in water and sewer this year. They'll, they should be able to complete their sewer training because that's only one year. And then next year they will start book one of the electric lineman course. They will be paid out of the utility funds, electric, water and sewer, third, third, a third. But they will also be working with Gordy and the street department when he needs help and it's, it's gonna be an all-encompassing position. It, we're not, we're trying to go away from this is my department, this is my department, this is my department. Everybody's trained in everything and everybody works together.
And one person will be in charge, I mean, you'll have one supervisor that supervises and decides which work is gonna get done.
Yes.
Everybody get a chance to take a look at that?
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to approve it.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale.
Second.
Seconded by Pete. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion carries. Is that a letter of support?
Um, Hartland sent me an email today, they're applying for a grant from the state. And as part of the application, they said letters of support are greatly help them out with their chances of getting the grant. And I told him I would put it on the council agenda to see if we would like to provide a letter of support to them.
Everybody get a chance to take a look at it?
Da.
I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, motion made by Julie, seconded by Pete. Send the, the letter. All those in favor say, or any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have no unfinished business?
Wait, 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 I need permission to add.
Oh, wait, I've got aye, yeah. Okay, we need permission to post the.
The city clerk position, I would like permission to post it in-house for two weeks. Interviewed the last week in March and have a recommendation at the April council meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Dale.
Second.
Seconded by Julie. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion carries.
See what I tell you.
You surprised.
Consistent.
You are consistent, yes.
Consistent.
Okay. Um, let's see, I was at, we'll start with the administrators portion of it. I attended the MMU A Leadership Academy and the Housing Partnership Institute Cable Commission meeting. I met with Dostal Electric to discuss our video equipment up here. And he looked over every, well, the two guys came and they looked over everything, they tested the mics, they brought some DVDs back. They said that the mics seemed to work fine, except for Kelly's. And I went on, if you go onto YouTube, Wade uploads the videos to YouTube channel and you can hear people on there. So I don't know what the problem is.
That made a big difference.
Yeah, oh, I'm sure. You know, if MediaCom is, if it's just something with their transmission or, I don't know what the deal is. But anyway, they're gonna troubleshoot your mic and they're gonna get a better setup for, so we don't have to plug in that overhead projector anymore. And I took it to the Cable Commission and they approved up to three thousand dollars to do that. So I'm just, I called Dostal, they're working on it and it's just a matter of them getting down here to do it, so. Okay, did you have a question?
If you tell him Kelly's was by Design.
Yeah, yes. Um, the Cable Commission met February twentieth, Wade is getting two new cameras to rent out for events. The Arlington Historical Society asked for a thousand dollars for two TVs for their museum. Scott Treblehorn was interviewed for the Cable Commission, seat vacated when Mark retired. He is the only candidate that was approved on the consent agenda. Troy Walsh visited with, from the League of Minnesota Cities and went over loss control issues. He sent a report and we are working on getting, complying with the things, the issues they found. It was nothing major, a lot of it's online security stuff that we could do better. I met with some representatives from the League of Minnesota Cities in Arlington and with the Arlington and Gaylord administrators. They just wanted to come out here and meet and make sure we knew they were a resource, what they offer as far as services. Uh, the park committee met with the Alumni Association to discuss benches in the park. We're looking at fifteen to eighteen benches. They're gonna put a plaque up because it's in honor of their annual honorees. And we're meeting, our next meeting is April sixteenth at eight AM. I did get them some prices on some benches, expanded steel, plastic coated, that say WSAA on them if they're interested in that. I pass that on to them, whether or not they're not, fine, I don't know. Ken's finishing up the audit, he might have to ask for an extension. His wife had emergency surgery last week and he took off and she's home, but she's laid up for six to eight weeks and, yeah, it was kind of scary because she was supposed to, she works in Alaska and she flies a lot and she was had, set to leave for Alaska and she had an infection and ended up in the hospital and two hours later she was in surgery, so. So we will hope for the best for her and we will work with Ken. EDA Director's Report. I spent twenty-four and a half hours on EDA-related duties this month. I attended a housing group in New Ulm, housing had just two days. Sibley County EDA lunch, winter opportunities and shop local meetings. Uh, the Housing Partnership Institute in Wilmer was a really good event. Um, I, I don't know what's gonna come out of it yet. We're working on setting up a kickoff meeting where the council, the EDA, winter opportunities and some other groups would be invited, and, and New Ulm will be able to invite theirs as well. Gary Krugel is going to become a member of the group as well, so we're happy the county is going to be involved. On that same note, I'm meeting with Phil and Sue Kaiton, Brian Maji from Lime Valley and Dan Brown from New Ulm to discuss the Healthy Heartland website. When we redid our website, it was in kind of on the same line as the marketing for the medical school. So the New Ulm portion of our group wants to see how that's all gonna flow and we're gonna meet and kind of talk about how our website and the Healthy Heartland home, Healthy Heartland website and all that will work together. And that's next week. The web training, we had the web training today, it was, there was nineteen people there, it was really neat. There's some things we could improve for the next event and I think we will, but I'm excited about it. I'm hoping to get more businesses lined up. What did, did you think of it, Mike? Yeah. Um, let's see, I had lunch with Amy Newsom, Laura Young, Dave Treblehorn for the Sibley County EDA and Amy updated us on the Arlington Business Expo, Child Care Initiative and Social Media Breakfast. And Melissa attended, I did not, um, I came here because there was nobody here, so. It was good and that's it. One other additional thing, the municipalities meeting will be April nineteenth and I am getting agendas out for that tomorrow, so. That'll be next month, I'll.
Is that here?
It's in Green Isle this time. Bert panning. And that's all, unless you have something for me.
Anyone? All those out here? Water, sewer, street, do you have anything, Gordy?
No.
Electric, Gordy?
No.
Pete, did you have anything? Okay. Bernie's here?
Nope.
Please, uh.
It's all good.
Anything more?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Cable Commission report? I see nothing else on the agenda. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same side? Motion carries.
That, we talked about that. But that's. But that's not the habit.